Okay, everyone. Good evening. Well, the November 12th Dune City Talk to Me, please come to order. It is 7:00 PM. Welcome, everyone. Ms. Mills, could we please have a roll call?
You'll get used to it.
I know.
Sure. Mayor Rebecca Reidy?
Here.
President Maury Sanders?
Here.
Counselor Dugwell?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon Meyer?
Present.
Counselor Ed Scarborough?
Here.
Counselor Ken Platt?
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counselors, I'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved. Second?
Second that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, I'll call for a motion to approve tonight's consented agenda.
So moved. Second?
So moved. The second that we approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. Announcements. We continue to have openings on various volunteer commissions and committees. And please contact any counselor or the office to... I know what they are. Birthday wishes to Gary Baker on the 3rd, and Acting City Administrator Jamie Mills on the 23rd, and City Councilor Maury Sanders on the 25th.
No, that's incorrect. My birthday's on Thanksgiving.
Oh, it's on the 27th?
No.
In their honor, we're gonna be having cake this evening after the meeting. So please, if you're able to stay, we'd love to have you join us. If not, you can always rush down here since the council meeting's over. Refreshments? Okay, there's the announcement next on the agenda. Has to do with volunteer recognition and potluck on December 10th from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. And over the years, since I've been mayor, we've called this a number of different things. But the primary focus has always been to get everyone together and to honor volunteers and thank the community for a year of good service and wanted to wish everyone well. So please, we're switching up the time a little bit this year. I'm going to have it from 2:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon on the 10th. So please mark your calendars for December 10th and join us here soon. We'll have some refreshments and talking and lots of good stuff. Agenda item number seven, we're at Citizen Input. Administrator Mills, do we have persons sent in? Okay. Dr. Howison.
Peter Howison, 83243, Kendall Lane in Dune City. Mayor, councilmen and women. A pleasure to have been so privileged to journey again to our sister city in southern France, in Dunes, France. It was, I mean, this is the third time we've gone. For those of you who may not know the story, some very fascinating barber from Dunes, France, a city about the size of Dune City, traveled here six years ago with seven bottles of wine and a personal invitation to the council to journey to Dunes, France. Well, I, with my wife, we took advantage of it. And for the third time, I was privileged to represent this city. And it was again, someone else should, well, they should come, someone should come here. And we would have to give them a really wonderful welcome because these people are so gracious and so loving. They love America. You know, this barber, Jean Pierre, goes to an American city, Las Vegas was his last. He went to this last year, but he comes here every year. Our mayor, Christian, was one of, I think, 31 mayors in the region. The Tarn-A-Garon, I'm sure my wife would pronounce that better. It was close enough. Which is a very large county-like area. And he was the only independent of these 29 governor-like people or mayors. And so he was the one elected to represent the whole area, or department as they call it there. So he is now the super mayor. So they have another mayor to represent us. And in any event, I hope the small tokens of their appreciation, a calendar and a DVD. Now, when you get on the DVD, I was confused because it has a French flag and a British flag. And I didn't know what to do. I thought, this thing doesn't work. But you have to press on the British flag if you want to hear it in English. And then it is so beautiful. They go through the 20 or 30 cities in this region. And Dune is one of those, or Dunes. They call it Dune, France. They don't pronounce the S. Well, actually, some of them do pronounce the S a little bit as it's in southern France, part of Occitan, which is not quite the same as northern France. You know, it's a different region. And they might want to succeed someday and have their own country. But anyway, it's quite a privilege to represent the city. I really appreciate your allowing us to have a resolution from the city. And who knows, maybe we'll go one more time. But thank you very much. And hopefully you enjoy the DVD.
Thank you, Doctor.
Which is yours. And there's an old calendar up there too. It should be next one. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Well, that was fun. We appreciate the feedback on that. Can't wait to see the countryside.
It's beautiful.
You know, it's time for executive session. So pursuant to ORS 192.6602E, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. I will now adjourn this city council meeting. It is 7 minutes after 7:00. And we will return to the audience at the end of that meeting. And now reopen the regular session of the Dune City Council. It is 7:27. 7:27. Okay. Onto agenda item nine, new business. Real property transactions and negotiations. Pursuant to executive session laws, we are not, the council makes no decision in executive session. It's just discussion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Counselor Sanders?
I'd like to make a motion that we direct the city administrator to contact three attorneys locally in town to contract for services to initiate an adverse possession claim against the property owners directly due east of City Hall in regards to a small circle of property which our merchant generator needs to be located. Second?
It's moved to the second that we direct our city administrator to solicit prebids for contract services from attorneys to pursue this adverse action against the neighboring of which a portion of our building exists.
Adverse possession.
Adverse possession claim. Say that right? Adverse possession claim. Any discussion? Counselors? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Anything further?
Direction with regard to the weir.
I'll entertain a motion in regards to the property around the weir on Long Lake.
I'm not sure the way to make the motion, Mayor, but if I understand it correctly, that we want to approach it from a water access?
If I may, that point of view has been pursued for some time. We already have all of the surveying done. We have the legal descriptions done. It was just hope that we could find a land access.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we pursue a water access right from the weir on Long Lake.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
It's been moved to the second that we pursue water access only to the weir. Any discussion, counselors? Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, that motion carries. Dune City sign an update about other brochures, so... Ms. Mills, could you bring us up to date on this issue, please?
Certainly. In preparing for the audit and reviewing all the financial documents in the last year, I discovered that there were a couple of checks written that raised an eyebrow for me. One was Mr. Hilden wrote a check to his business to do the stay and play brochures for the triathlon. And the second check was to his business for, to redo the sign on Highway 101, which suffered some vandalism not long ago. I went through the minutes. I went, there was no purchase orders. I went through the minutes. There was no authorization by the council. And nobody else signed the check but Fred. And this would give us a real black eye in front of the auditor. I can tell you that for sure. But secondly, the checks were written in February and March, and we are in November, and the work still has not been done. So I mentioned it to the Budget Committee when we were discussing it. We didn't have a quorum, so no action could be taken. I spoke with our city attorney. She recommended that, depending on what the council chooses to do, she suggested that I go ahead and write contracts for the services to be done by Mr. Hilden under his business. And so I had done that. But in conversations with, during the Budget Committee discussion, I wanted to make sure that the council weighed in on what they felt should or should not be done under the circumstances. So that's why that has been put on the agenda. The attorney indicated that it was not a discussion that took place in executive session or had anything to do with any of that. And so she said it's public trust, a public trust issue, public funds issue. To bring it out and about what we discussed here.
Okay, do counselors understand what's happened? Okay, all right. Counselor Sanders?
So if I'm understanding correctly, checks were written from the city to this business for work that the council had... I mean, is this work that would be under the purview of the city administrator to make that decision himself? Or is it something that requires council approval? I don't know what these checks are. We're not even talking about them.
Under the rules of procedure and the personnel handbook for Dune City, the city administrator is not allowed to make a decision for anything having a value of over $250. One check was for $1,500 and one was for $3,000. Even according to the charter, no one is allowed to make a decision for anything over $2,000 without weigh-in from the council.
Was one of the options in your discussion with the city attorney is simply ask Mr. Hilden to refund the money back to the city?
No, that was not something that we talked about.
Why is that?
Didn't come up. It wasn't, it didn't occur to me that that would be something that you guys would want to do.
Counselor Scarborough?
I have some great concerns about this. And I think we need to back all the way back to six months ago when we didn't get a chance to vote on expending that much money. We never had any discussion on whether the sign needed to be replaced. You know, the sign is the big lump sum and there's a substantial amount for the brochures also. I think we need to back, way the heck back up in time and start all over because I see, you know, it was suggested that we put contracts together for something that I think there's a real question hanging over it. So we're talking about $4,500 here that we didn't get a say on. It never came in front of us. And I have real concerns about this.
Counselor Ross?
The brochure, one of the items was a brochure.
Yes.
For brochures. And that was for last year's duathlon?
Right, that's what.
Did we ever receive any brochures?
No, we have not.
Well, then we couldn't even attempt. I mean, that's already passed.
I know.
And we didn't get our money's worth at all.
Yeah, well, I know.
Well, that's a whole other issue than me.
Counselor Sanders?
Has anyone asked Mr. Hilden about this?
I asked, I inquired, Becky, you did too, as I understand. But he assured me that he was going to get the work done. When I first found the checks, that's the first thing I did. Said, you know, Fred, what's this all about? Oh, they told me to go ahead with it and...
I'm trying to wrap my arms around this thing and understand it completely, but...
It's been kind of an investigation. I found the checks. Oh, what happened? Called Fred to find out. And he said, oh, no, I just haven't gotten to it yet. Been really busy. And, you know, he's sick. And so... But he did tell me that the council had given approval. Well, I was a counselor. I don't remember, didn't remember that. So my next step was to go to office staff and ask them what they knew. And they said that he was going to move forward on it because the council told him to take care of it.
Were these checks ever on the bills of the session?
That I don't know. I'm sorry. I was going to check on that. I have not checked to see if they were on the bills of the session.
Mayor?
Aye.
We're in a gray area here. Would it be wise to maybe have an executive session next week sometime? Because we've got to be real careful about what we're going to be saying right now. I mean, like I said, we're getting on the edges of things.
Well, I don't know if this qualifies for executive session discussions, but it might very well. So we can certainly table this discussion until we learn the accurate answer to that question. So we definitely do that.
We can have an executive session to consult with our attorney. That's not a problem at all.
I think each, the council needs to have a rundown from the beginning date that the checks and what you've discovered, the discovery, so that we can absorb this a little bit.
And with photocopies of everything. I'd like to, I'd like to see, this is... This is what it is.
So, at the pleasure of the mayor, do you want to have a special executive session? Do you want to wait? At the suggestion of Counselor Sanders, I did contact Mr. Hilden via email and ask him to withhold further action on either of the projects.
Okay.
Would we want to ask our attorney what direction we should be going on this?
So that's what our executive session will be for, is to discuss with our attorney.
Okay.
Well, let's see. Do we want to wait 30 days, you guys, or do you want to just get it together? And we'll try to pick a mutually agreeable time to do this?
I think it's something that should be done fairly rapidly and not wait for another month.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll get that together and then post notices for an executive session ahead of time.
I'd like to have the facts first, the information from the city administration before we schedule anything. I'm hearing that the assertion is that it was put before the council. I don't remember myself, but, you know, if it was in our packets, it would be interesting to know that, if that's actually true. If it isn't, then that's important also to figure out.
I did check to see if they were on bills of the session, if it occurred to be under bills of the session. Though I have not done that yet. I'm sorry.
That's great. We'll figure it out.
We'll find out.
So we'll get all, gather all the material and... To be continued. Everyone good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Portage at Sayu Slaw Dam.
Silkooes Dam.
I say Sayu Slaw.
Silkooes Dam. I'm sorry. But when the company that I contacted to get a quote for removal of the portage and the pier, that whole, removal of the portage is a piece of cake.
Right.
It's the pier that becomes a problem. The company that I contacted said they can't even touch the pier. And the companies that you're going to be looking at to do that will probably start at about $25,000 before they move forward. And the company that was talking about removing the pier, removing the portage and restoring the bank and all that stuff back, their quote came in at $8,700. So this $375 renew the permit thing is sounding really good. But I don't know where else to go. I will continue to look for people who might be willing to take over the portage. But IP said maybe if we wanted to buy the dam, they would be willing.
Have we talked to the port of Sayu Slaw?
Fred has, but I have not recently and not, certainly not since it changed.
Yeah, so we'll just wait a little bit and talk to them and...
So we are doing water access right to a weir now, and we have a proposal maybe to buy a dam?
No, we're not buying the dam. They want, I think, a couple million for it or something. It's outrageous.
Counselor Scarborough?
So, refresh my memory. We have a, there was a 15-year contract.
Right.
And that is expired.
Expired, May of this year.
So what happens if we just say we are not going to up the contract and just let it sit there? And then somebody can adopt it? Because I was down there two weeks ago. My wife and I took a kayak trip. And, you know, we have some nice brochures. There's a map of it. All three miles out to the ocean. We went all the way to the ocean. The lower part's not bad. But the upper part, I would assume state lands is in charge of Silkooes, of the waterway itself. It's not a whole lot of fun in the low tide going through there because there's so many trees that fall across. Every year, more fall. And you see in certain places where the bank is being eroded, there's a couple of really big spruce trees, 150-year-old spruce trees, that are going to be in that waterway pretty soon. So it seems like the only concern that anyone is talking about is that portage. Well, the portage is no good if you can't tip down river. So I'm wondering, what if we just say, well, we really don't want to renew up it for another 15 years and not pay the $300 and some dollars and just let it sit?
My only concern would be any liability associated with that. And do I know what it would be? I have no idea. I have no idea. You know, if it rusts out again and somebody cuts themselves or rips their leg off or whatever.
Yeah.
But if we don't pay it, they're saying we have to remove everything from it and restore it?
And that is what the state gave me the impression, that if you don't renew it...
And we don't have the money to do it. So if they wanted us to do it, we'd love to, but we can't. We don't have the money.
You know, I would think the state, it's their responsibility if they don't have a new tenant for that, so to speak. They can go out and find another person that wants to take over it.
A group.
A group.
I agree with you there.
And you go from there. I mean, we don't own the property around it. We have a lot more important things to worry about than that thing. So I just say, and I say, you know, we really don't want to re-up the contract. Good luck.
Well, I think at least personally, I'd like to just maybe see the contract that we entered into with them and see exactly what it says. And I know that the reason it was possibly a 15-year contract is because we had grant funding to help us do all of this stuff. And that's how long we agreed to keep control of it for, I think primarily the grant funding. And then it is likely that, you know, the laws all changed and now we're in a whole different environment and all these, you know, required restorations and different things. But I don't know that. So it'd be interesting to see what the original contracts were so we could make a, you know, somehow an educated decision on whether to do what Ed says or there's no possible way we should do that, or pay $350 and think about it for another 10 years or whatever. What's $350? How long does that give us? Time frame?
I don't know how fast the state will act. I mean, if you were to follow the recommendation of Counselor Scarborough, I don't know how long the state would get around to saying, well, you need to do something. I really don't know.
They really don't want to do is it exists. It's in...
Well, they do know it exists. I do know that. Because they sent us a letter.
Saying that the contract's up in May of this year.
Right, our permit expired.
Permit expired.
Permit expired.
Counselor Meyer?
I'm not speaking against what Ed is suggesting, but have we had an attorney read this thing and decide? Because typically a contract, either party can get out of it in some way, shape, or form. If we only had it for 15 years and we just say 15 years is up, we're done. I think we need to get a legal opinion as to whether or not we could just say, thanks, but no thanks.
I would get inside him. Let's get him divorced.
Okay, well, we'll start with the easy thing and try to, I don't know if that's easy, to find the attorney, the contractor, the negotiations 15 years ago. And at least read through it and see.
Well, that's long-term. That's terminated. I mean, it's done. The agreement. What is at question now is the permit for the structure to be in place. The state authorized, granted a permit to Dune City for 15 years for the structure to be in place. If the permit is not renewed, then the state could require, and that's what they said in the letters, they would require us to remove it. And that's what gets expensive, is the removal.
Did we put it there?
We put it there. Dune City put it there.
With grant funding?
With grant funding.
State Davis?
It's a very large draw for recreation purposes in the area.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And tourism. And tourism.
And there are plenty of places in Florence that benefit from that, from people coming here. We don't benefit from it. So...
Only the ones that stay in the local hotels.
So I think someone else needs to take it over. But it's, you know, it's outside of our purview. That's the problem I have. But we're still liable if anything happens.
Okay.
Newbornville.
Newbornville. All right. Okay, moving along to appointment of replacement code enforcement officer. So, you know, I was talking to a counselor earlier today. And probably counsel, best thing to do is just, I don't know, because we're going to talk about it, but instead of appointing a counselor for this, we appoint staff. And then if there is an appeal that needs to occur, then they can appeal the staff decision to the council. So that sounds like a good idea. Counselor Sanders?
The ordinance designates the city administrator or their designate. So Ms. Mills can appoint anyone she wants as her designate to be the code enforcement officer for the city. That's what the ordinance says.
The issue is that this body appointed Counselor Platt as the code enforcement officer not long ago. And he is going to be unavailable for me to pick up the phone and say, hey, we have a problem over the next few months. And so my thought was, let's make this smoother. Let him off the hook so he can go take care of what he needs to take care of and find somebody else to fill in. And it can be me. It can be a counselor. It can be whoever.
For the code, who would you want?
I'm fine with doing it.
Sold.
I mean, because if it's a problem with roads, I call Maury anyway. If it's a problem with the building, I call Duke.
Okay, awesome. So this says appointment of code enforcement officers. So should we have a general consensus that this is who it's going to be? Or should we actually do an appointment?
I think the code speaks for itself. Our city code speaks for itself that the city administrator is the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
Or their designate. I don't think there's any action that's needed on this.
And it could be that we had, can do it when we're...
Right, we were between.
We had to play to any designation.
That's right. Counselor? All right.
All right. Okay, good. I just wanted that cleared up. Who's gonna put their little name on the other one?
Okay, resolution series two number five regarding search fees. And I have a resolution somewhere. Oh, here it is. Don't we need to repeat the resolution first?
Would you like me to just describe the resolution?
That'd be fine.
Okay. It has been since nineteen-seventy-nine, since Dune City raised its lien search fees. And that's the fee that we paid, that we charged to title companies when they call to check out the lien, make sure there's no liens on the property and that sort of thing. Like I said, it's been nineteen-seventy, since nineteen-seventy-nine. We charge currently a fee of ten dollars and it costs us twenty-eight dollars to do a lien search based on the number of hours, the number of eyeballs, the processing of the information and then the billing and all that. So the recommendation is to increase the fee to twenty-five dollars. And that's a staff recommendation.
Okay. I'm going to entertain public comment on this. And I will now open the agenda item for public comment. It is seven fifty PM. Is there public comment?
No one signed it?
No one wants to sign up to comment on the resolution? Okay. For or against? All right. Any counselors comments? Counselor Sanders?
Long overdue, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution series twenty-fifteen number two, resolution raising lien search fees as presented to us.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We moved to second that we adopt resolution series twenty-fifteen number five, dated eleven twelve fifteen, resolution raising lien search fees to twenty-five dollars. Any further discussion, counselors? Counselor Scarborough?
If, if our estimated cost of staff for doing this is twenty-eight, shouldn't we be at least bringing even? Which is a question I have to remember in this.
Well, that's not what we're representing here. I know what it says here, but it's represented that it would be twenty-five.
Twenty-five, because twenty-eight is kind of an average. Some of them are shorter and some of them are longer. I mean, some of them are a piece of cake to do and others take a little more time. So...
So on the average, then?
It's twenty-eight, yeah. So I figured twenty-five was certainly fair.
Further next? Twenty-five, whatever. Okay, any, any further questions? During that, I'll call for the question, although it's in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, done. Contract for consultant services acting administrator. Acting administrator. So we have before us a contract which our acting administrator, Jamie Mills, is wanting us to discuss and authorize for there to sign and you to sign. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Could you all have an opportunity to look through this? So this is the acting administrator. I guess you do need this, yeah?
Yes, this is not a permanent thing. This is acting administrator, this is to get us through until we advertise and interview and go through the entire process. I felt it was important that we have a document that memorialized what everybody... Hopefully, everybody was on the same page when they, when they did that, but I wanted to make sure we got it right and so everybody understood. It's an hourly rate based on hours worked. So, you know, it's actually hours in the office. We have now a time clock in the office to track the hours, which will make it much easier than having everybody check up on everybody else. So, and there's no benefits. You know, I, as a contractor, would pay my own taxes and my own insurance and everything. So I anticipate it would save the city a significant sum of money during this interim period in hopes to keep us a little bit more together under the term, under the situation, the circumstances now.
I think it's very good, Jamie. Do you think you can add to that?
Yes, I agree. I agree, this is very appropriate. I know that with Thanksgiving coming up, Christmas and holidays and whatnot, I don't see the city, Dune City, even looking at publicizing it higher until January. So I think this is very appropriate.
Okay, I agree. Want to motion, or Counselor Wells?
No, I think it's also very appropriate. I also think we're very lucky to have Jamie here to take this over right now when we really need this. I like, it's a good contract.
I'd like to make a motion that we direct, council directs the mayor, the council president to execute the employment contract with Ms. Mills as the acting city administrator.
So we moved to second that we negotiate, that we...
Kill it, execute.
Execute this contract. Kill it. Kill it. With...
Good, Jamie was getting aid on.
And any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the question, although it's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Okay, moving on. Duke, Counselor Wells opened a award bid for repair of dry rot. Have you done that or are we doing it now?
No, the city staff has done it, but we have received a proposal here from a local firm. I'll call it a local firm. It's Ron Kaufman Builder out of Greensport, Oregon. He submitted a proposal. There's a handout here. I think, I think what we should do, he's left it open-ended here on the timeframe on it, so I'll hand this out and everybody can look it over. But I don't think we need to make a decision on it tonight.
We don't?
No.
Oh, very good then. But...
Okay, this is the only bid we received. So once this is passed out, then it's public record at that point. And if we decide not to award the bid, other contractors could come see what this person did and...
Right. Well, why don't we just award the bid?
That's my question.
Well, I, I, my first, I, because of, I'm not sure about how much we thought we were gonna spend on it. It's, if you read through the whole thing, it's, you're gonna do this wall out here, part of the south wall and the part of the wall on the storage building. And it come to a total of fifty-eight-hundred dollars. And that can go up because it's, could be a can of worms when you open this up and it could get, it could grow very quickly. My feeling on it right now, I know we need to get this done, but because of budget and money things, I, I, you know, I think it's too much money for it right now myself.
Jamie, what is the budget that we have left to do this?
I'd have to go get it, I haven't looked. We did issue this RFP twice and this is the only bid we have received. And that was with personal contacts to a number of contractors, so...
Well, if we have a budget, authorize the expenditures of three-thousand dollars for this, obviously we can't do it. But if we've authorized, you know, seventy-five-hundred, we have to protect the investment.
Yeah.
You budgeted, the council budgeted ten-thousand dollars for community, community center repairs last year and I don't really know why. I, I can't recall why. Unless it goes that long.
Well, don't we have some kind of roofing things out there on that side too?
There's some fascia board issues, he brought that up in here. But again, that's not critical.
Oh.
That's not critical. The most critical is this wall right here.
They are competing, ask the city administrator or staff to get the number of what we have. I haven't seen a proposal for any of that, so...
Oh, well, let's just take a five-minute recess. It's two minutes to eight.
I love our staff.
We can be in the council meeting, it is two minutes after eight. Okay.
Continuing the discussion on the amounts budgeted for repairs to the building. Total overall, over the budget altogether, over all funds, fourteen-thousand-three-hundred dollars were, was budgeted for repairs to the community center and acquisition of the generator. Now, we did get the fifteen-thousand-dollar grant for the generator install. I believe we have to meet half of that as a matching. So seventy-five-hundred of the fourteen-thousand-three-hundred would be considered our matching portion. I'm just saying that because there's some, also volunteer time can be credited toward it too. But anyway, so, so about seven-thousand-five-hundred is what we have budgeted for repairs to the building.
Where are we here to be on budget performance? Because I wasn't at the budget committee meeting.
I mean, I did not have good numbers at the budget committee meeting.
Didn't anybody? We didn't have good numbers?
Well, I just recently found out that Fred did not put the budget numbers into QuickBooks, so I've been...
We don't know where we're at, which is...
No, I'm working on it.
Okay, so...
And goodness, it's only one quarter.
So that budgeted amount, does it have to encompass all the repairs of displaced needs?
Over the year.
Okay.
Can we table this until we find out where we're at as a city?
Yes, after we, we can't do that. So Counselor Wells?
Well, that's where I was basing this on because I hadn't been paying attention what's going on here and been at the budget meeting. This number right now and then in lieu of what we learned tonight, with some possible check stuff, I don't see where we have the money as much as we need to take care of the building. We need to take care of the budget, we need to take care of our money. You know, I don't, I just don't see where we have it right now.
I'd like to have the mayor to table this.
Okay. We will table this discussion indefinitely. Maybe we'll bring it up next month, maybe not, so indefinitely. Should we notify that they're, that we've done that? So they're not like trying to assess the communication with them and say thank you and then we'll table it right now and thank them for the, for admitting one part.
Mayor Reed?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask the city administrator, what do you expect to have the city's budget performance entered, the data, so we know where we're at? Because I'm very nervous about spending money that I, I don't know if we have or don't have.
I am too. Like I said, I discovered that it wasn't, none of the budget information had been entered. I discovered that today. I got all of the income budget information entered. I'm working now toward getting the expenditures entered.
What timeframe are you looking at?
I don't know how to done for Thanksgiving. If I get things, if things go my way.
So next meeting, we should have it then in December?
If you can pull it off.
Okay, thank you, that, that helps.
Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Yeah, if I knew, I'd be quick.
All right. All right, last one. Twenty-sixteen Oregon use triathlon, duathlon.
In the packet, I included a breakdown of strictly statement of account for the triathlon out last year. And as you can see from that, it was a significant loss primarily because we only get paid if, on the sponsorships. And, and so we don't get paid for any of the registration fees or for people who participate. We only get, receive funding from sponsorships, which is the hangup on the agreement. The agreement says that we split those sponsorship fees with Blair, with Best in the West. And that's what we're looking at. You can see we took a two-thousand-dollar hit last year for the expenditures. Now, we can trim some of the expenditures down. There are some things that we purchased that we probably didn't need to do. And so there will be some trimming, but it points out to me that we really, really need to get going on the sponsorships. Blair prepared the new sponsorship packet for the coming year. There's one in front of all ahead. I will tell you that we have had contact with Three Rivers Casino and although they haven't committed, they seem very interested. So we will be pursuing that with great effort. But we do need to get big sponsorships. And we need to finalize the contract with Blair.
What do you mean finalize the contract with Blair?
Well, we don't have a contract with Blair. Fred never got it finished. And so what we have is a verbal agreement. Yeah, we'll split the sponsorship fees with you and you get all the registration fees. Well, we see that, what that does to us. That means he gets all the money for the people who participate and half the money for the work that we do. And so that's what Fred was doing. He was standing up to that and he was saying, no. If you get sponsors, you keep your sponsorship money. But if we get sponsors, we're gonna keep our sponsorship money and do it that because it's the work that we did. And Blair was not willing to go with that. And so that was where they were butting heads and no agreement was ever reached. And then the event came and went and, and here we are. And I would like to get it done before then, one way or another. But I need some guidance. I mean, if you're okay with the fifty percent, then we'll go with that. But if you're not, I don't know what's going to happen. I don't know if he's gonna say, well, then I won't do the event. You know, I don't know.
I have the impression that we're gonna go fifty percent.
That we're gonna do fifty percent and...
They're gonna take over the event and...
After the five years. This is our fourth year coming up. So we need to call it up and figure it out.
Just editorial comment. I mean, I think it's really disappointing that it was only thirteen-hundred dollars for sponsorships last year. I mean, Dune City proper doesn't benefit that much because we don't have businesses or we've got a few, but, you know, we have, how many people participated?
Two-hundred and, I don't remember.
Okay, so there was a lot of money spent in Florence. People, food, hotels and gas and everything. And to only get thirteen-hundred dollars and you get half of it for sponsorship, it's kind of sad because this is why so many small businesses go out of business every year. If you go, if you go two-thousand dollars in the hole on something that this size, I mean, without sponsorships, there's no reason to do this. I mean, there's really not.
Yeah, this was a revenue generating event that we kind of put together. And so I'll have to really, maybe it's time to have a discussion about how we're going to solicit sponsorships. Because we worked hard last year trying to get people to do this and we didn't come up with that much. So I don't know if it was the economy or what it was.
I think that businesses like Three Rivers are, you know, good to be a corporate sponsor size. They like to deal with winners. I think you have to have a proven track record to have that. I think we're getting into that area now. This is, the event is successful, we just didn't make any money out of it. I think once they see, you know, maybe this year, they'll be better, so...
We'll do what we can. Counselor Sanders?
I have no problem with the fifty percent of the sponsorship for the city. I can understand where we could probably trim some expenses depending on... I can understand where we could probably trim some expenses, depending on what the sponsorships are. And I agree with you, Mayor, it comes down to going out to the community, and then I'm talking about the greater Florence community, not the city of Dune City, but to all the businesses that benefit from this, to understand that, you know, they, we need them to have some skin in the hand. And hotels, and restaurants, and, chamber commerce, everything and anything. Because this is a moneymaker that generates revenue in the greater Florence community. But I also agree that the city of Dune City cannot subsidize it. So we need, I think it's a one-year here of just a tremendous push. But I'm okay with the 50%, because I knew that was, Blair, Bestin West is in the business to make money. This is their livelihood, I understand it, I get it. Our purpose is to make a signature event for the city of Dune City, and that's what we've done.
And, yeah.
And that's the purpose.
I do want to point out that this does not include the merchandising. And the reason is because the merchandising paid for itself, I mean, we broke even. So, I, and just, uh-huh, and sales continued to take place, so, you know, the merchandising part seems to be working well.
Well, you know, we threw around ideas about possibly hiring a solicitor, you know, a salesperson to do this. To go around and ask, because, you know, I don't have a lot of time, you guys don't either, you're busy with stuff. So, let's talk about that for a few minutes. I mean, I know that our staff, Renee called a lot of businesses and followed up, and, you know...
Is that it, Linda?
Yeah, but, and I think, I mean, we're possible, everybody worked on it, everybody worked on it.
I will tell you that our webpage designer has also volunteered. Whether he'll charge or not, I don't know, but Abe said that he would help out.
I say let's give him some motivation, or some incentive to do that, or whoever, you know, let's think about that. Because this is November, we need to be hitting this hard by January, you guys.
This, the event is real early in May, I think it's like the first weekend of May.
I'd like to have 10 color copies of this, please. I don't want to have it tonight, but I, I think this is, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start taking it around. Good. Anything else, guys?
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think sometime in January, we need to have a valid contract drawn up and signed by both parties before we go any further. I mean, word of mouth or handshake is fine, but we have to have a contract before we get to May.
Yeah.
We never had a contract till last year, that's what it sounded like, and I think that should happen no later than the end of January, sign contract with them.
Would you like me to have the contract, the proposed draft contract before the council, the January meeting?
Why can't we do it next meeting?
I can try.
Yeah.
I just don't know what Blair's gonna do.
We could email him, or maybe you come to my office, and then we can just call him and have a conference call with him.
Okay.
If anybody else wanna join us? If we need you, we'll call in the troops. Okay. Sound all right? Public hearing, ordinance 229, amending chapter 32. Proposed ordinance requires two readings before it is enacted. City Charter section 34, 34, 3 provides that both readings may be read by title only if no council member present at the meeting requests it be read in full, or B, if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each member and all requirements for posting and advertisement have been met. Have all of the advertisements and postings been met? Ms. Turner Mills?
Yes.
Okay. And does any council or desire the ordinance to be read in full? If not, I will entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
So moved.
Councillor?
Sorry?
It's been moved to second that we read this ordinance by title only. We will, we have the first reading of ordinance 229. Ordinance 229, and ordinance amending chapter 32 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances regarding qualifications for appointment to the Dune City Road Commission. I will now open this agenda item for public comment, it is 8:17 PM. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the ordinance? Hearing none, okay. Or against? Hearing none, I will now close the public comment period at 8:18. Only because it took me a minute to say all that. I will now entertain a motion to have the second reading of ordinance 229 by title only.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved to second that we read ordinance 229 by title only. Upon the motion being passed, and any revisions having been read during the motion, the chair reads the title of the ordinance for the record. Any discussion? Okay, we will now have the second reading of title, of ordinance 229. Ordinance 229, and ordinance amending chapter 32 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances regarding qualifications for appointment to the Dune City Commission, Road Commission. We didn't pass this first motion. It says, first motion, now entertain a motion to have the second reading of the ordinance, it's moved, it's seconded.
It didn't go around?
Nope. So, we'll discuss. The motion is on the table, which is the motion to have a second reading. Your motion, your second. Any further discussion, councillors? Okay, then, we're gonna vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, that motion carries, to be read by title only. Ordinance 229, and ordinance amending chapter 32 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances regarding qualifications for appointment to the Dune City Road Commission. Second motion, I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for ordinance number 229 as presented. Does everyone have an opportunity to really read that, and it's pretty good, very nice job on that ordinance. As presented and adopt and place for final passage of ordinance 229 on the 12th day of November. So, when we make this motion, it'll be, there'll be a first and a second, and then we'll vote by raising of hands, okay? I'll entertain a motion, accepting the wording for ordinance 229 as presented and adoption, and for adoption.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved to second.
As I recall, councillor Sanders asked that this be made, passed by emergency. And I, that language is not currently contained in the ordinance, it's got a 30-day.
And reflecting on it, I'm okay with the 30-day. Just when I, when this, before we vote, we'll discuss, and I'd like to give the council the basis for this ordinance.
Okay. So there is a motion and a second, so it's now time for a discussion. Councillor Sanders?
Richard Palmer, who has been road commissioner for many, many years, was volunteer of the year. He had his residence on Clearlake Road inside the city limits, he moved to a property that is on Clearlake Road. And there was a question of whether he was living within the city limits or outside the city limits. Elcock says the best they could tell from the plot maps is that it was outside. Commissioner Palmer asserted emphatically that his property lands based to put it across Clearlake Road, put it into the city. Rather than costing Commissioner Palmer a lot of money to do a survey to prove to the city that this property is where he says it is, you know, if somebody wants to volunteer, I don't want to penalize them by zapping them for a couple of hundred bucks. What this says, if we have people that have those special skills and qualifications, which Commissioner Palmer does, even if he's outside the city, he can sit on this commission and give us the benefits of his expertise. That's the whole thrust and basis behind this.
I like it, I like it. And as we've discussed previously on other agendas, you know, this is a timely motion. And it's been evident to us over the last, most recent months and years, that, you know, volunteers are hard to come by. We want our volunteers to, you know, to be eager and willing to work, and we appreciate that, so... When you've got somebody before you, and they want to volunteer, and there's a technicality in the way, let's do our best to rotate that, and this is forward-thinking of the, of the road commission to even suggest this, I think. So, kudos. Any further discussion, councillor?
I like the attitude of being able to have somebody that has expertise that you need to have, even if they're not living right in the heart of Dune City.
That's good, sounds good. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor of the question? Vote by roll call.
I'm sure she's gonna read her answer.
What? I'll have our administrator apply the question.
Okay, shall, councillor Meyer?
Yes.
Councillor Wells?
Yes.
Councillor Sanders?
Yes.
Councillor Scarborough?
Yes.
Councillor Platt?
Yes.
Motion passed as unanimous. Thank you all. I really think that this is one of the most progressive things we've done in a while. I like that, okay. Ordinance 230.
You should be good at it now.
I'm good at it now, I don't think so. A proposed ordinance requires two readings before it is enacted. Do I have to read this again? Okay, I will. Just be quiet, do it. All right. The city Charter section 34, 3 provides that both readings may be read by title only, okay? If no council member present, the meeting request it be read in full, or if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each member and all requirements for posting and advertisements have been met. Have all postings and advertisements been met?
Yes.
Okay. Does any council desire the ordinance to be read in full? If not, I will entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
It's been moved. Second?
Oh, it's been moved in second that we read the ordinance number 230 by title only. I will now open this agenda item for public comment, it is 8:25 PM. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the ordinance?
One more, I'm here.
Yes.
Did you, you vote on, everybody voted on that, then you should read it, or did you not take a vote?
We didn't vote.
No, on whether to read it by title only?
Oh. I'm sorry. That's all right. Should we reset the motion? However, that motion's still on the floor, so it's a good vote.
That motion is still on the floor, so we can call a question.
All right, any further discussion, councillors? Oh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Okay, now read it.
Any opposed, say no.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
No one's opposed, so the motion carries, reading it by title only for the first reading. I'm gonna now open it.
No, you have to read it, because they're not gonna know what to talk about if you don't read it.
The ordinance 230, 230, and ordinance amending chapter 36 of the Dune City Code, in the Dune City Code ordinance regarding appeal of decisions made by the code enforcement officer. I'm gonna now open this agenda item for public comment, it is 8:26. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the ordinance?
No one has signed it.
Okay, so they would have to sign it prior?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, all right.
They don't have to, but...
Okay, no one in the audience is gonna talk about it, so I'll now close the public comment period, it is 8:27. I will now entertain a motion to have the second reading of ordinance 230 by title only, and with any revisions that must be read during the motion. Upon the motion being passed, and any revisions of being read during the motion, the chair reads the title of the ordinance for the record. Okay, so I'll entertain the motion for second reading, councillors, maybe?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved to second that we have the second reading by title only, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, we'll have it. Title only for the second reading, here we go. Ordinance 230, and ordinance amending chapter 36 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances regarding appealed decision made by the Dune City Code Enforcement Officer. I'll now entertain a motion to accept the wording for the ordinance 230 as presented and adopt, and adoption for the passage. This is the final thing, so...
I have approval of ordinance number 230, second?
It's been moved to second that we adopt ordinance 230 as presented. Any discussion? Under discussion, let's talk about it. Councillor Sanders?
I am not gonna support this. I have a problem with legislating a process for a decision, administering a decision by the city staff, that a problem doesn't exist, because everybody that makes a complaint, in my experience in dealing with it, would give it, it would give them a venue to inundate us with multitudes of problems, whether it be a parked car, or this, or that. The idea behind code enforcement, in my opinion, is you find a violation, and you deal with it, and then there's a disagreement, and that is brought to us. Not the fact that we don't find a problem, and someone wants to make it a problem. This is a nightmare for government. This is, this is the epitome of doing things, in my opinion, backwards, now we live that.
Okay. How did you, how would you suggest that this be altered, councillor?
Well, it's, to me, it's a non-issue. I, if someone says there's a violation of an encroachment of the right-of-way, someone's put a pile of wood in the right-of-way, a code enforcement officer goes out there and says, you know what? It's, it's, most of it's not in the right-of-way, marginally it may be, I don't see it as a credible complaint. I don't see it as a safety hazard. The people say, oh, no, it's a problem, now we gotta go out there, no. When the code enforcement says there's not a violation, then it's, we either trust our code enforcement officer, or we don't.
That's a good point.
That's a good point.
You should know.
Well, reminded the discussion that we had in the last meeting, that we thought we needed this.
There is a particular complaint that was raised, that has been investigated four times. And all four times, by four different individuals, all came to the same conclusion that there was no complaint. And you might wanna talk to code enforcement. Prior code enforcement officer Kent Platt, because he knows, he was one of the ones that did the investigation, and set, found the same findings that everybody else found. That person has now gone to the planning commission, and raised Cain at the planning commission meeting, that no one is listening to the complaint, and everybody's wrong.
Not like they don't like what they heard?
But there is no, right, they just didn't like the answer, that's the bottom line, they didn't like the answer. But they're not going away either. And in that situation, then, you would want to offer them an opportunity to appeal. They would have to pay the fees associated with the appeals process. Right now, we've expended far more than our appeals fee in doing investigations on this issue. And so, that's why this was brought forward, is to give some sort of due process to the person who feels they were wronged, because the code enforcement officer... person who feels they were wronged because the code enforcement officer didn't come up with a decision that they thought they should have.
It sounds like to me they've had due process already. It's been investigated four times, there've been four negative...
That's their...
Decisions made on that. It sounds like they've had overdue process to me. I mean, you wanna take care of folks, but, you know, like Morton said, they didn't like the answer.
Okay. Councilor Sanders?
Any citizen can make any complaint they want. If it's the same complaint that's been investigated, I think the answer is we've already investigated that, and I'm sorry, there's no complaint. Well, if they don't like the answer, I'm sorry. You know, I hear things in my lifetime that I didn't like the answer to, like, you know, I didn't wanna go in the army when I had to. I had to. You know, sometimes life has disappointments, but I don't wanna create a bureaucracy and a burdenous body with this. It's unnecessary in my opinion.
Good, thank you. Councilor Meyer?
It seems to me as if we were to have had this in effect, we would have eliminated three of those four opportunities for these people to complain, 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 complain. They got turned down the first time, they have a chance to appeal. To me, that makes sense, and the final, the buck oughta stop here.
Yeah.
We need to support, it just seems to me like it would eliminate a bunch of the hoop law that's been going on with four times they go through this kind of thing. It would be one, one time they'd have a shot at it, and it says no, and if they don't like that answer, then they come here, and that's the end.
Final answer, good.
But that also tells our code enforcement officer, we do not trust them.
No. That says to our code enforcement officer that we do trust them, but people should have a right to ask a question. Are you sure that you're right? And we can say, yes, our code enforcement officer made the right decision, and that's the end of it.
You know, you have a good point. And also, here's another angle on that. And I'm not gonna say that I, I'm just gonna not say anything about that, but there could possibly be a time, you know, or in past times, that the code enforcement officer had a bias, or, you know, there's possibility of that too. And so then the citizen's right to appeal, you know, there's less likelihood that, you know, five, six people are going to have the same bias. So...
Or it might have just been gas.
Could be. Could be gas, yes. All right.
I like the appeal process. I just think it's one step, and that's the end of the step.
Okay, well, I really like this discussion, so thank you all. Any more discussions?
Sounds to me like maybe they just need to block some phone numbers.
If I may, and in a final comment, the public has the right to address and redress their grievances to government. They can access us as elected officials if they think there's a problem. But that doesn't mean that when our code enforcement says there's no problem with this specific incident, that they can keep making the same complaint, and our code enforcement officer can say, no, we investigated that, we're not expending more time. And if they don't like it, they can come to any of the elected officials, then we can evaluate the performance of the code enforcement officer. But I don't think this body has the expertise to determine whether it's a violation of code or not up to.
Well...
Enough said.
Okay, this vote'll be interesting, so... Any, anything else? Nope.
I think it's related, then maybe we need to direct our code enforcement officer not to revisit places two, three, four times. Make their decision, and then inform citizens, take it to an elected official. Don't you complain to us.
But if they took it to the elected officials for one final statement, that would end it. I think it might, I mean, rather than coming to you and complaining again, and that you're standing here...
And then going to you, and you, and me.
Going to staff, that's why you ended up four times.
Trust me, they will not come to me if the decision, because I will not entertain it, because the code enforcement makes their decision, there's no complaint, we're done. If there's a problem with the law, then let's change the law to address it. If there's an issue and the law isn't covered, then let's look at the law, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be party to second guess our code enforcement.
Are we all ready to vote on this?
Yeah.
Should we vote by roll call?
It's whatever you want.
Let's vote by roll call, because it's fun. All right, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying so, audibly, by roll call. Our administrator will call your name.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Councilor Wells?
No.
Councilor Sanders?
No.
Councilor Scarborough?
No.
Councilor Platt?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you all for the process, it was very good information. Who needs to do these summonings, the motion fails?
Yes, I'm supposed to.
Okay. All right, we are to agenda item number eleven, which is unfinished old business, the police car. Administrator Mills?
Please don't table this, that is my opinion.
Okay.
I have a vehicle off from the building that I really like to do something with. Okay. I was instructed to get information about the vehicle. It is a 2005 Ford Crown Victoria, four-door sedan. It has a hundred and forty-seven, or a hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty miles on it. The Kelley Blue Book value, considered in fair condition, which I would debate, is sixteen hundred and fifty-five dollars, and the battery is dead. According to last year's figures, we paid four hundred and fifty-nine dollars for mileage between July first of 2014 and June thirtieth of 2015. Those were the questions I was directed to bring information on. I can tell you that the car would have to be detailed before anybody could take it anywhere, especially if they have any allergies to dog dander. It was a canine vehicle, and you know it when you get in it.
Especially in the rain. So, would the cost to get this vehicle up to snuff be more than it's worth?
I don't think so, because most of the stuff that would need to be done has already been volunteered to be done.
What do you recommend?
I mean, there would be costs associated with replacing any insignia on the side, but I don't think there's going to be any cost for removing it. The, I do need to check the lights, someone taught me how to use them the other day, to make sure that the blue and red have been discontinued. They can't do that, we could use the amber rope, can't use the red and the blue. And I don't know.
What do you recommend?
I don't have a recommendation, I'm sorry. I really don't. I don't, I do not see a need for the city to have it, although it'd be really nice to be able to let them meet a reader and go around in it instead of their own vehicle, you know, but I don't know, and I don't know any use for it other than if we have a bad dog that we need to go get.
So what if we got offered to the city of Florence to take it back?
We could, I guess. I mean, we can do it, you can do it if you want to do it.
If they say no, then we could sell it.
They already said that. They already said they don't want it back.
And they signed over title, we have the title signed over.
We won't do it. If it's not functional for what we need it for, whether it be a decoy vehicle, because we can't have the markings, or for a city vehicle because of the dander and all the other issues, the marking cost, then maybe we just sell it.
Councilor Scarborough?
I think financially, it doesn't pencil out. If we're only spending four hundred and sixty dollars a year to reimburse staff mileage, you're looking at insurance upkeep, fuel, what are the tires like, are they fairly good?
The radials.
You know, you're looking at a sixteen hundred dollar car, maybe it's not a complete car, there's a little backseat, front seat's broken in. This is one of those things, this should've come to us before that ever got parked out there. And so now we're wasting time talking about it. My own personal, if I had something like that sitting there, I would sell as is, take bids on it, put a price on it, whatever, I'd get rid of it and use the money for something. But I just think it's gonna be another one of those things hanging around our neck. It could drive fifty miles and transmission might go out. Maybe better car worth it than that.
Councilor Tobin?
So, my preference would be, like Jamie said, get it out of the parking lot, we'd get some money out of it.
Well, I think we would have to take the police sign off before we could sell it, and probably the lights would step off.
I think the police is off, it just says Florence, isn't it?
No, it just says police on it, and no Florence.
Oh, okay.
I wish they'd take that off, Florence.
I do think the lights would have to come off, though.
Yeah, red and citizen, right, all the lights.
The light barriers worth it, man.
Jamie wants to get rid of the vehicles, so...
That's what I hear. Upward.
You don't wanna table this anymore, do ya?
No.
Let's hear a motion, then, come on.
I know that we disposed, what have the city administrator disposed of, the car that was going to us by city forms.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second?
It's been moved to second, that we... Get rid of the car. Any further discussion? Take appropriate steps to be legal, or whatever. Okay? Any discussion, I'll, hearing that, I'll call for the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, she carries. No, we've told them multiple times that we really appreciate, and it's very kind of them to think of us, you know, for that car, but I think we're just too small to have benefit of it. Costs us too much money, I think we just can't do it.
Mayor, if I may, may I, I'd like to request that I be excused. I have a friend that lost his brother this morning, and he lost his wife two weeks ago, and he's in bad shape, and...
Your excuse, councilor. Thank you for lasting this long. Be in touch. Moving on to comprehensive plan update, finally missed the contractor.
You'll find in your packets a preliminary draft of the scope of work being presented by Ms. Belson, and a draft engagement agreement. She and I have not had much opportunity to talk, and I think this warrants, it's such a, it will be a huge task and a huge endeavor. I think perhaps just giving you the documents, giving you some time to chew on them, think about how it would go, I don't think you're in a position to be able to make a decision regarding it. This evening is special in light of the fact we have no clue how we're doing with the budget, and so I'm gonna suggest that perhaps this matter be tabled for full discussion when we have more information.
Okay. How about if we table it to like a January meeting or something?
That would, sounds good to me.
I just have one question, is there a cap on the amount that we would spend?
Yeah, we had, was it three thousand?
I don't know, I can't remember, but it's not in here, I know it's not in here.
It is, but...
Right. I mean, I just would like, you know, have a...
Some control.
Yeah, corral on it, yeah.
Yeah, corral.
Yeah, I'm more in favor of tabling it.
Okay, so let's table it indefinitely, and we'll bring it back up as we see fit. I mean, we've gone this long without it. Okay, we're down to reports. And I would just like to thank our interim administrator, Mills, for making this happen. I know that you had a number of things on your plate, and for you to do this is, to me, remarkable. I don't know that it took a lot of time, but it's been one of our goals since I became mayor, and we started making goals for the council, and we put on one of our goals under good governance, that we would put up this camera for weather. And I don't know really what all involves, apparently it's, you know, a great deal to have, needs to take place to happen. But if you all go out there to our website, douncity.com, you will see that there is a weather camera placed on Woking Lake, and there is soon to be, in fact, it's almost operational for there to be one at Silkus Lake. And that, to me, means a lot, to actually go like this, check on one of our goals of the council. So, thank you for making that happen very much. Linda Stevens, you got the staff together to execute, and there you go, and thank you.
Linda was a bulldog on that, to get that done.
A special thank you to her for doing that, please, tell her.
I will.
That's a big, a big deal, to me.
It's great.
And so, Lynn, you know, I checked it, I checked it early this morning about, oh, daylight, so it was about seven, seven, ten or so, and there, it was really interesting because there's a little spider web that you could see because of the moisture, and then when I looked at it again about eight o'clock, there was no spider web, so it apparently died. It's cute.
Can we replay a nice day over and over?
Yeah. Well, now that you're mentioning that, day playing over and over, the time is an hour off. So, we'll have to...
They have been noted. The Silkus Lake camera is up and running, and I hope it will be on the website tomorrow.
Soon. So, look forward to that, I mean, that's, to me, that's a big deal. So, we are progressing. Okay. Budge in the way. Who's next on the agenda?
Communication.
Communication. We did all the going. Okay, next.
Community center.
Well, the good news is we got a bid to repair our building, but that news is we're not sure how much money we have to pay for it, so we tabled that. As it is since the spring or the winter rains become, our weeds have got out of control outside, and actually the crew on that, that's shut it down outside.
Oh, my God. Thank you. Councilor Platt?
Nothing.
Nothing. Councilor Scarborough?
Our next quarterly parks meeting will be next month, Thursday, I can't remember what date it is.
Thursday?
Three o'clock here, tomorrow.
The seventeenth.
Okay, um, thank you, seventeenth December. Councilor Sanders filed a report for audit. Uh, Councilor Meyer?
Yes, I have taken the fun myself to go through a hundred and twenty-eight pages with up to thirty-five entries per page, and extrapolate some information. What I've done is I've picked a month, and this was kind of prompted by a question that the always lovely Bonnie Rose Allen brought up last meeting, in terms of, you know, do we know year to year to year to year what's going on? So, what I have done on this, and I've got a copy for all of you guys, too, is that starting on five twenty of 2015, I took the clarity, reading, moment reading... I took the clarity reading, moment readings of locator code WA1, which is the same one I used through every single year, from 2015 back to 1990. And if you look at it, I think that our water quality has been relatively consistent over the years. And in fact, I'm not convinced that it is getting a little bit better after we had some low times before we got the ordinance passed to keep phosphates out and those kinds of things. I didn't bother to go through every single reading of every single thing. But Bonnie, if you want to look at it...
Thanks.
I would love to have you give me some comments. But what I tried to do, as I said, I went through either March or June, and every single year from 1990 to now, there's one year, 2003, where there was no reading done at all. And to be consistent, the same locator every single time. And some of these look way off, and some of them, you know, highs and lows, but I think we're okay. I mean, there's some anomalies, but that may be the readers, it may have been the equipment, and it may have been the weather, and it may have been whatever. But overall, as I've been saying for the last, you know, we've got a good water quality in Woking Lake.
We do.
And that's my report on them.
Wow, thank you. Wow.
And Mary, take this up.
Thank you, Mary. Emergency services report.
I attended the Westland Emergency Operations Group meeting on October 19th, where Sergeant Michael Copenhaver of the Plaquemine County Sheriff's Office gave a wonderful, very informative PowerPoint presentation on the active shooter situation that happened at the mall. Perhaps you guys remember it back when. It was really good, the whole demonstration, and it was good to see. And they learned some very, very valuable lessons from that that they have now incorporated into their Alice training, which is the active shooter training course that they're using in the schools. And they do encourage every community to participate in a training session. So when I am aware of when the next training session for elected officials is, I'll let you know, perhaps where some of us can go. I know that Rapunzel attended one, and you did as well. And I think it would be something that, especially where we're going to be ticking off people regarding septic and other things in the near future. We may wish to go to active shooter training class. Okay, all the minutes for the meeting are in here, and the emergency operations plan comments were due to Stacy the end of October. So I think we're going to be seeing some action in that regard in the very near future. And that's all for emergency services.
Okay, city administrator?
October permit activity dropped off compared to September. There were only five, let's see, there were only one, two, three, four permits, which is five less than were issued last October. Planning Commission did hold their regular meeting on October 29th and had a public hearing on the proposed septic ordinance number 228. It was a well-attended meeting, went very late, and the hearing was continued until November 19th. They did vote to keep the record open, and will continue to, and will have additional testimony taken at that meeting on the 19th. We encourage everybody to come out. I did write the letter to the pool board regarding the excise tax collection, and have yet to hear back from them. I have not received any more information from Lane County regarding the roadway transfer or the conveyance of lots 700 to the county. And I bring that one up in particular because we did receive our bill from the Department of Forestry for that lot for this year, so it has not yet transferred. That bill is $1.90, I mean, like $1.90 cents. So I'm not real worried about it, but it has triggered me to want to follow up with that and see where's the D. We sent it to you as I've been recording.
So that tax bill?
Yeah.
Dollar, ooh.
$1.90.
Cheapest tax bill in history.
Let's see, we talked about that. We talked about that. Again, the budget committee meeting, we didn't have a quorum, so it was just discussion. And the cameras, I mean, it's been on the to-do list for the last three years, so we're pretty proud of ourselves to be able to knock that one off the list. And let's see, due to a clearing of the right-of-way property on Huckleberry Lane, the, it is sliding onto Alder Drive. And so we had an issue where we had to have the code enforcement officer out there and our director of roads. We all went out and did an investigation. Thankfully, the people who own that property and did that understand that that was not supposed to be clear-cut the way that they did, and understand that they did not use a licensed contractor to do the work, and now understand that that was a bad idea. They are working very hard. They've got it tarped off now with Visqueen to try and protect it until spring, to try and keep it from collapsing and eroding away from the rains until spring. And then in the spring, they will move forward to a full recovery situation that I'm sure we're going to hear about from the road department, because there's some things that need to be done with regard to the road there as well. We have concerns raised over a growing pothole on Woodland Lane. If you've ever been down there, watch it when you turn the corner. Don't go into the middle of the road. Pull over to one side, because it's getting pretty deep and knock out the alignment in your car. So they're working on it. Mr. Clinton from the Road Commission came in today to see what he could do about fixing it, or at least putting a temporary fix in there until we can do something more permanent and work with the county on doing that. With regard to the Charter Communication Franchise Agreement that has been on our to-do list for several years, I spoke with Representative Charter, and they are currently in negotiations on a franchise agreement with another city using our same attorney. And so the thought is, once that city finishes its negotiations, our attorney will be on board. I mean, they're doing a lot of legwork that we wouldn't have to pay for. So we think we can dovetail in with that and perhaps get our franchise agreement renewed at a better rate for the future.
Is it Spectrum or Charter, or is it Charter-Spectrum?
It's, I don't know. That's all part of, I'm just waiting. Wait till I hear from the attorney. There are some issues that they are still resolving that would be issues that apply to any city that they might represent. And so if they can get those tough issues resolved, then it may be easier to move forward with each city individually. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Except, and I was gonna put it under good of the order, because it's not in my report.
Well, you can be first. Good of the order.
Budget's coming. And so if your committees have projects that you'd like to do, make sure I get the amount from your committees, what you would like to ask for on the budget. Thank you.
Good of the order?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Literally for the good order, I'd like to thank our staff for sticking with us through this time of transition in Dune City. They're doing their, as always, their excellent job.
Yes, thank you.
Ditto what Duke said, also getting some of those items done that should have been done a long time ago. Get those out of the way so we get time for the more important things. Thank you.
Councilor Platt?
I don't agree with both of them, right? I concur with them 100%.
Will you be at our next meeting?
No.
Where we certainly wish you well. Thank you, Ms. Okay, I have something for good of the order. And I was approached by the Forest Mayor, Mayor Joe Henry, and there's a project that's going on that, it's a, it's a public arts program project that's designed to further tourism. It's being put together by the event center, and it involves placing a piece of art in Newport, Yahots, Walport, Florence, and then we need to decide whether or not we would be interested in participating, and then on the way down to Reesport. And what it is, is about their, their, um, each person, each town is purchasing a sea lion. And it's not a Bronson, like the one that's in front of the Chamber of Commerce. It's made out of fiberglass. And it's for geocaching, and local artists are encouraged, like we have local artists, that we would, my vision is turn it over to the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission, to see if there is an interest for us to do it. The cost for the actual structure is about $1,500. And I thought we'd just bring it up now so we can send it to committee or let you guys look at it. And Jennifer Conley is the contact person at the event center that's kind of spearheading this little concept. And I don't really know what geocaching is.
You don't?
What is it?
Geocaching. People go out and they hide things, little containers, little figurines or whatever. And then they post clues and the GIS location.
Oh, the GPS location?
Yes, the GPS location.
Oh, and then they go and find it like a treasure hunt.
Like a treasure hunt. And then once you find it, there's a website, and you know, you join. And once you find it, you post on there that you found it, and any comments about it, or, you know, whatever.
Ah, okay.
You'd be surprised how many there are around here.
There's a lot of them.
There are lots.
I just mark my hunting spots in my GPS, not available to them.
Okay, all right, so you already know what that is, geocaching.
Kids love it. It is a wonderful family activity. And you get out and you're walking, and you're, it is, it's great fun.
So there's a number of things that we could do with this. I mean, you could have a contest to see who could name the object. We would have to decide where we're gonna put it, what's the purpose of, you know, where. And, you know, then somebody would have to paint it or decorate it or some of those kind of things. So there's a lot to think about with that. It could be, you know, a community draw, a publicity thing, and all of that. So there you go. That's it. That's, we'll give the order. We'll give it to committee. Anything else? Let's eat cake?
Couldn't we design a car to look like a sea lion?
I think sea lions are a bar.
Good try, though, Councilor. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
No move, all right. It's 9:03.
Maybe some sugar.